And good morning. Again, I apologize we're a few minutes late this morning, but we're doing county's work, I can assure you. This morning, I want to bring someone up that really needs no introduction. He's been here many times before doing the invocation for us, but he's in a little bit different role today. He is now the U.S. Member of our media team, and we're glad to bring him aboard, and I'd invite you to come up, Mr. Perry, if you'll do the invocation for us this morning, we will appreciate it.
I want to thank the Public Affairs Office, Commissioners, Ms. Carroll, and everyone for allowing me the opportunity to come and work with you. Everybody's been very welcoming, and I do appreciate that. For almost thirty years, I was on the road speaking at all kinds of different meetings in this country and others, and I will guarantee you it's great to be seven miles from home instead of 700 miles from home. I also thank you on behalf of the Sheriff's Office as their chaplain, too, and let's pray this morning. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've made. As the psalmist said, "This is the day you've made." We will rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for those that are in attendance today. We thank you for our Commissioners and the people that are here as a part of our meeting. We pray that you'll lead God and direct us in all things we see, say, and do. And we thank you for spring, Father. We thank you for this past Easter weekend and the greatest story ever told, and we know this is a new season for new life and help us to remember the small things as well as the large, and we'll give you thanks, honor, and glory. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you all again.
Please rise and place your flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Has everybody had the opportunity to, let's see, read the minutes or any corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move a dot.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion? If all of us favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Adjustment of the agenda, Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things we would like to add to the consent agenda. One is the elevations and floor plan for our EMS substations and also our proposed 911 center. As the board's aware, this has been through our Facilities Committee, and it's been vetted and recommended to the board for approval. The second thing is a request from Gateway looking at a rate increase for the fixed route for Mount Olive.
Okay. Are there any...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't actually a rate increase, it was to establish...
Excuse me. Establish a rate. Yes, sir, you are correct. To establish a rate of $3 for the fixed route between Mount Olive and Goldsboro. Thank you, sir.
And as Commissioner May have stated, it might be good to look at it in future and see if we can do this for the other parts of the county as well.
It was actually a decrease.
That's right.
From the van rate.
It is understandable.
That's right. The fixed rate is three, the van rate was five.
Yeah. Round trip, you go from ten to six is what you're doing. So it's a good deal. It's a good deal. Okay. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda from the Commissioners? Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
No.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If all of us favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay. We'll move right on into the public comments. We're about ten minutes late, but it's okay. You got four minutes. Give us your name and your address, and who are you, lady?
Carolyn Lee, 189 Lee's Country Club Road, Mount Olive, North Carolina, 919-658-2978. Many of you know of my involvement in the Civil War as a historian and a presenter, especially with the United States Color Troops, and I want to invite all of you and make the community aware that the 135th Regiment will be encamped in Goldsboro this weekend, the afternoon of April 6th, and all day on Saturday, April 7th. There will be a history presentation at the Pop-Up Museum that the city owns at the corner of Center and Walnut in the old wig shop, and there will be a special dinner and presentation by Dr. Harry James Saturday night at the Goldsboro Civic Center. All of you are welcome. And if you're not aware, there were four North Carolina black regiments that served in the Civil War, all based out of New Bern, and the 135th was one of the last regiments that was installed and mustered out only six months after service. But it was the only regiment that was based in North Carolina. So I invite all of you to come out anytime Friday afternoon. We will have reenactors encamped in the spare parking lot next to the well-traveled beer on Center Street at the very end. So there will be quite a few reenactors, there will be speakers. I will have some presentations also that Saturday afternoon. So you're more than welcome.
Thank you. If you never called a presentation, you need to hear it.
Pardon?
I said if you haven't heard your presentation, they need to hear it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else want to speak this morning?
Barry Merrill, 432 Club Knolls Road in Dudley, 919-922-1499. I'm, I hope I tap into your hearts a little bit. I'm the new proud grandfather of two of the newest citizens in Wayne County. My daughter, last Tuesday, presented me with twins, presented my wife and I, and we've got the privilege of helping to raise those kids in our house. As I mentioned, I live in Dudley, and my daughter is a teacher at Wayne Community College, and so she values very much the importance of education. And as a proud NC State graduate and master's degree graduate at NC State, she teaches English at Wayne Community. I look forward to being a part of my grandchildren's lives as we raise them, but my daughter has said they are too precious to send to a low-performing school, and as it stands, they would attend Brogdon Primary, one of the five identified low-performing elementary schools in this county. My grandchildren are precious to me, as yours are to you, but I would suggest as the other children and grandchildren in this county are, and I just ask that you be open to the school board's call to put extra resources in these low-performing schools. Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Thanks, Mr. Merrill. Anyone else? Here are no one else. Public comments is closed. We did not have an important committee this morning, is that correct? Okay. We'll move right on into unfinished business. Do you establish a public hearing on May 15th for the revised flood damage prevention ordinance for Wayne County? Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. New flood maps become effective June 20th. They were done about two years ago. They've been in review by FEMA, North Carolina Emergency Management Department of Public Safety. Those maps have been adopted, and they become effective June 20th. Part of the requirements is that we adopt a new floodplain prevention ordinance to go along with that, to replace our existing ordinance. In your agenda packages, submitted a document that had some red, green, and blue writing on it. These are some changes to our existing ordinance. There's not a lot of changes in there. The last time I presented it to you, we did have an addition of a two-foot free, no build-on-field requirement. Removed that from that after consideration by the state and talks with the state and your concerns. So we did remove that out of the ordinance. So we'll go through this a little bit here. Anything that was written in blue or green is new to the ordinance.
Unfortunately, we got the black and white.
Yeah, we did.
You did get black and white. It should be color. It looks on page 30. It starts on page 30 of your agenda package.
Page 30, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, it does. We got it.
I got it.
The first one is the, the first one is the actual ordinance.
Yeah.
The second document is the, it highlights the changes.
Okay.
And some of the options.
And it is in color.
Okay. Yeah. It's a little difficult to read, but...
I had to get through the ordinance.
So the first thing is on page 31. You'll see under the objectives, the state added three objectives: minimize damage to private and public property due to flooding, make flood insurance available in the community through the National Flood Insurance Program, and maintain the natural and beneficial functions of the floodplain. It's on page 31. The next section goes into the Article II definitions. They, this is where most of the changes from our old ordinance to this new ordinance takes place. They added some definitions. They modified some definitions, and they made them, made some clarifications on it. So you see alteration of a water course was added, the area of future conditional flood hazard. This is on page 32. The design flood, the development activity defines what a development activity is, defines what the digital flood insurance rate maps were previously. They always had a requirement for paper maps. They now have an online website that you can go to, and you can determine whether your house is located in a flood zone or not. It's called the Flood Risk Information System. We have links to that on our website. Defines what existing building and existing structure is. Moving over to 33, and if you have any questions, stop me. 33, it defines what flood-resistant materials are. Moving to 34, defines what the floodway is. They changed the definition of that. The floodway encroachment analysis, what that is. What defines what a letter of map change is, and they add a definition for that, a letter of map amendment, and a letter of map revision. Moving over to page 35, that continues. They define what a light-duty truck is. They add what the lowest adjacent grade is. They removed what the definition of mean sea level is. They added the definition for non-conversion agreement, and then they added in the definition of a recreational vehicle. So moving on over to page 37, they added the definition of substantial damage, and what is substantial damage and what is substantial improvement. Of course, damage would be something that, you know, damage that occurs to a home due to flooding over a period of time, and a substantial improvement would be somebody going in and making substantial improvements to a dwelling in a flood zone. They added the definition of what a technical bulletin is, what is temperature-controlled, a definition for temperature-controlled, and that was it for the definitions section on 30. We're on page 38 now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As of my understanding in regards to all these changes of definitions, that is non-negotiable, that all of those are, must be included.
Those are non-negotiable there. Non-negotiable.
Okay. Accept them, huh?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Article III, the lands to which this ordinance applies. This is at the top of the page on 38. They added in that this ordinance shall apply to the special flood hazard area within the jurisdiction, including the ETJ, if applicable, of the community, and they established Section B, the basis for establishing the special flood hazard area, under a cooperating technical state agreement between the state of North Carolina and FEMA. They added that language into the ordinance. Moving over to 39, they had added penalties for violation. We will go over that. Violation of the provisions of this ordinance or failure to comply with any of its requirements, including a violation of conditions and safeguards established in connection with the grants of variance or special exceptions, shall constitute a class-one misdemeanor. Any person who violates this ordinance or fails to comply with any of its requirements shall, upon conviction, there I be fined not more than $100 or in prison for not more than 30 days, or both. Each day such violation continues shall be considered a separate offense. Nothing herein contains shall prevent the community from taking, from Wayne County taking such lawful action as is necessary to prevent or remedy any violation. They added that definition there, and they defined $100. You can, you do have an option of making that more restrictive and adding to that dollar amount if you wished. Article IV, under the administration, it defines the designation of a floodplain administrator for a community. So in this one, this would designate the planning director as the floodplain administrator. Moving over to page 40, it, at the top of the page on page 40 of your agenda, it adds in NAVD 1988. That's a vertical datum that was used for determining flood elevations. The previous ordinance did not specify which datum, so they want to make sure that all surveyors and engineers are using the correct datum when they determine the elevation certificate. Down to the permit requirements at the bottom of the page, when you apply for permits, the permit should include a complete description of the development to be permitted under the permit, whether it's be a house, garage, pool, septic, bulkhead, yada, 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 accessory structures, what so forth. And a statement, we eliminated the no-fuel requirement, so that's not in there. That was an option. We had it in the original one. We removed it from this one. Over to page 41, for structures dealing with floodproofing. If you're going to, a commercial building in a flood zone, you have the option of, instead of elevation, you can floodproof it. So it defines the, and goes through the floodproofing certificate sections of what's Also, down at the page 42, it adds for the determinations of existing buildings and structures. That's for permits to alter or do substantial improvement to an existing building, what those definitions are, and when certain requirements would take place resulting in requirements for floodproofing or elevation. Moving over to page 44, in the middle of the page, item number 21, the county shall maintain a current map repository to include, but not limited to, historical and effective FIS reports, historical and effective firm, and other flood maps and studies adopted in accordance with the provisions of Article III, Section B of this ordinance, including any revisions, including letters of map change issued by FEMA. The county, as part of its flood program, currently houses those in the planning office, historical flood maps, historical FIS reports, and you can also go to the public library and get a copy of the current flood maps, as well as access the Flood Risk Information System through the North Carolina Department of Public Safety's website. So there's several resources there to research that data. That's a requirement. Moving over to, let's see, what next section it is. Page 47, provisions for flood hazard reduction. It talks about the electrical heating, ventilation, plumbing, and air conditioning equipment. In the previous ordinance, it did not specify that those elements had to be elevated to the flood protection elevation level, which is two feet above BFE. That does not change from our previous ordinance. It's the same two feet that we required previously, but this does specify that those units that service a building need to be elevated. So that's a requirement from FEMA. Let's see here. Section 48, page 48, Section B, specific standards for non-residential construction. New construction and substantial improvement of any commercial, industrial, or other non-residential structure shall have the reference level, including the basement elevated no lower than the regulatory flood protection elevation. So it kind of defines that that's not for non-residential construction, or you can use a floodproofing certification on those.
Mr. Chairman, let me go back to 47, where you're talking about the electrical equipment, heating, ventilation.
Yes, sir.
And my understanding that to also include duck work.
Yes, sir. Including the duck work.
Including the duck work.
Yes, sir.
So if we're already at two foot above, you'd have to be three and a half foot above to include the duck work that's up underneath that.
Or place your duck work in the attic.
Beep, pardon?
Or place your duck work in the attic.
That's correct. Okay. So that is an option. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Moving on, there was, you'll see in there the option for field. We removed Coming over to page 50 in your agenda package, additions and improvements. Any combination of repair or reconstruction, rehab, addition, or improvement to a building or structure taking place in a 10-year, or in a one-year, 10-year period, shall have a cumulative cost of which exceeds 50% of the structure value, then the structure would have to be brought into compliance with the ordinance. That's in our existing ordinance, and we just carried that forward into this ordinance. But they did define that as a requirement. That was not a requirement previously, but we had it in our ordinance. Let's see here. It also, let me get back here. Don't miss, recreational vehicles, because this is an item that's always hit on. At the bottom of page 50 starts the recreational vehicles. You'll remember, they added the definition of what recreational vehicles are, and now they define those recreational vehicles as temporary placement. If the RV has been on site for fewer than 80, 180 consecutive days, there's no elevation requirements. Also has to be fully licensed and ready for highway use, and also if it's permanently placed, the recreational vehicles that do not meet the limitations of temporary placement shall meet all of the requirements for new construction, which means elevation. So license has to be maintained in a road-ready state, be on-site less than 180 days, and be ready to tow, and that's the definition of an RV sitting in a flood zone. If it sits there with the tongue removed, the tires removed, and underpinned, then it's considered permanent, and it has to be elevated. So this was a, not in our previous ordinance. This has been added to this ordinance as a requirement. Also, another item down at the bottom of 51 talks about storage tanks, fuel storage tanks, propane tanks, the way and manner which they're anchored or buried. Talks about underground storage tanks. Underground tanks in a flood hazard area shall be anchored to prevent flotation, collapse, lateral movement resulting from hydrodynamic and hydrostatic loads. Above-ground tanks need to be elevated. In a flood hazard area, shall be elevated to or above the regulatory flood protection elevation on a supporting structure designed to prevent flotation, collapse, or lateral movement during conditions of design flood. Any of the above-ground tanks that are not elevated, that do not meet the elevation requirements, shall be permitted pending that those tanks are designed, constructed, and installed and anchored to resist flood-related or other loads, including effects of buoyancy during conditions of the design flood. That was something that was, is an issue, but it was not part of our previous ordinance. So if somebody established a large fuel tank, that tank has tendency in a flood event, come up, pop up, and float off, breaking lines loose, leak the contents. So this is addressing any of those large fuel tanks that would need to be addressed. Let's see here. Moving on, that should be about it. And that is, that is the last edits that we made to the ordinance. So basically, a few of the big-ticket items. You, you know, we removed the note, the build-on-field requirement. So we went back, and we have added the, defined what that heating and air conditioning equipment is, and defined that it has to be elevated to the regulatory flood elevation protection limit, which is two feet above whatever the BFE is at that site. And you also added in the recreational vehicle requirements, and you added in underground storage tanks. Those are your big items that were added. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Recreational vehicles. It's established at 180 days, six months. Is that established by the county, or is that established by FEMA?
FEMA.
FEMA establishes it. So they're saying it's a temporary structure if it stays there for six months or less.
180 days.
180 days.
Okay. We would need to establish a public hearing. Obviously, the number of affected property owners is so great that this will require a half-page newspaper ad to be run twice. Any flood property owner inside of a flood hazard area that does not live within the county has to be notified by first-class mail. So that's quite a large number, probably about 500 properties owners that live outside the county. So we would, we're advertising the newspaper, and we'll need to notify those property owners by first-class mail. And we, what we'll do is we'll post this to our website. Public hearing notice will give the website address, and we'll have both this, the official copy of the ordinance as it's written, and we'll also have these notes, both on the website, so somebody could download it and look right at it and see the changes. Any additional questions? All right. Is there a motion to establish a public hearing on May 15th at 9:30 for the revised flood damage prevention ordinance for Wayne County?
So moved.
Motion on the floor. Is any additional discussion? If all of us favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We went over the consent agenda in detail earlier. Are there any questions about what we discussed? If you do, bring that now. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Your motion on the floor. Any discussion? If all of us favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. U Business, motion to approve or proclamation, proclamation for Wayne County Recognition Day for National Service.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To County Chairman, Mr. Page, to all the Commissioners, to County Manager Honeycutt, my friends Attorney Parker and Ms. Bowden, and to Ms. Spade. We are so happy to be here today. Thank you so much for allowing us to come, and thank you for presenting this great honor to us. I am Delbra McIntyre. I am the Senior Volunteer Programs Manager at Wages, and I have my assistant here with me, Ms. Clara Murray, and both of us are very grateful retired county employees. So we just want to tell you all, thank you so much. We talk about it often. After working for the county, we brought all of those skills to us at Wages, so we thank you all so very much. We are here today because today is a very special day for senior volunteers. Today is National Service Recognition Day, and our county is one of the counties in the country, not just in the state, but in the country, to recognize and to be thankful for what our seniors do. Wages sponsors two of the national senior programs. That's the Foster Grandparent Program and the Senior Companion Program. Our oldest acting, active volunteer is 90 years old, and so we are so grateful. Last year, our seniors provided a total of 167,015 volunteer service hours to residents... fifteen volunteer service hours to, um, residents of Wayne County. Um, and the proclamation reads, whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service is a federal agency that helps more than five million Americans improve the lives of their fellow citizens through service, and whereas over two hundred and eighty volunteers and service members serve Wayne County residents year-round through the Foster Grandparent and Senior Companions Program, and whereas foster grandparents are role models, mentors, and friends to children with special or exceptional needs. The program provides a way for volunteers ages fifty-five and over to stay active by serving children and youth in our community. Foster grandparents help children learn to read and provide one-on-one tutoring in classroom settings. And whereas senior companions make a difference by providing assistance and friendships to adults who have difficulty with daily living tasks such as shopping or paying bills. Senior companions help those adults remain independent in their homes instead of having to move to a more costly institutional care facility. Senior companions give families much-needed time off from their duties, run errands, and often provide friendship for their clients. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April third, two thousand eighteen, as Wayne County Recognition Day for National Service, and commends this observance to our citizens adopted this, the third day of April twenty eighteen. Thank you so much, and if they're, oh, they have to approve it?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on it. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation as presented?
Salute.
And used. Is there any discussion? Always a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
They would like a photo.
Yeah. I didn't know if she wanted to take anybody.
Do you want them to come down?
Yes, please.
Here we go.
Same as we did last night, same way, same way we did last night. Let them get a spin there, y'all see. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, y'all just in front of you. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Okay, so can we see everybody?
Oh, y'all got a banner at home?
No, we're from Wayne County, North Carolina, we gotta send, we gotta send this to Washington, DC. Okay, we're sorry, we just got to make our presence known when we're sitting here, when we're sitting here, aboard. Thank you all so very much, we appreciate it.
Commissioner.
You have got.
We thank you, we appreciate it. So if you're fine, just find Christy, she'll have a gift, okay? Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, absolutely. What did she get?
I jumped in off the agenda a little bit, we noticed, we noticed little scouts out here, and I had our meeting today, and we lost one over here like you said ago, y'all know he had to be out in the hallway there.
They just wanted to chase him.
I like to recognize anything that's coming up, actually, as part of your badge, knowing your badge is a lot, hey, come up here, so you have the picture taken. He threw to me, too, actually. There you go. I didn't see him. Go ahead, you're pretty young. How's it going? Yeah, so, we all do much for each other.
Everybody wants you.
If you'll let him know what he missed.
Again?
Correct, correct.
I'm, uh, I'm seventy-two years old, my scoutmaster's still living, so he's in his nineties, but that'd be a person that you would always look up to for the rest of your life.
Yeah, well, I am.
Okay, is our video gonna work today? You know I'm picking on you.
I'm not looking at you, bro.
Very good. All right, county managers' comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, uh, just a couple of things I wanted to update you on, uh, number one is to remind you of our CIP workshop that we have scheduled after our meeting on May one, and want to let you know, Allison and Chip and Janice Rogers and Ryan and myself had a very good meeting with Davenport, looking at ways that we can do our CIP and, and hopefully do it a little bit easier, that you can have more control over some of the things that we're spending our money on as far as CIP. So it was a very, very good meeting, and I appreciate the work Allison, uh, and her staff did getting that ready. Uh, next, just wanted to mention, uh, we start our budget reviews this week, uh, we'll start with the community college on Thursday, and then all next week, uh, we'll begin looking at our individual departments. So the budget time is upon us, so we're getting it together, and, and again, appreciate Allison and her staff of, of helping us organize in that and moving that forward. Um, wanted to mention, uh, April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, the chairman and I will be, uh, flying to Idaho at the Mountain Home Air Force Base, uh, with the, um, uh, Military Affairs Committee, uh, to kind of tour the Mountain Home Base in Idaho, so looking forward to that. Um, one of the things also the board has asked for is we'll have James Wade, our Maxwell Center Director, will be at our next meeting to kind of give you an update on activities from the gala till now, and talking about next steps and things that we're doing, so I, I think that'll be really important to see, is how much that, that center is currently being used and, and being booked and being looked at, so, uh, it, it truly is, I think, doing the things that we wanted it to do, um, after it did open. Um, the other thing I did want to mention to you, and I forwarded this to the board yesterday, was an update on the stream cleanout, uh, from Ashley Smith and our contractors, and, and I just wanted to kind of read that email because I think it's important, because there's a lot of questions, uh, that the public has with respect to where we're at on the stream cleanout. Uh, we are a little behind because of some weather issues, it's been very, very wet, very rainy, and also, uh, the contractor had a couple of issues, but we worked through all that, uh, we're moving forward, uh, but just a quick update, uh, completed Dudley to Herring Road, stopped at Thirfaire Swamp because he had to tear out some beaver dams, so, uh, uh, we need to let the water recede before we can go back in after tearing out those dams. Uh, completed the Blue Line to Hood Drive, and, and Ashley and her staff are checking up behind the contractors to make sure it's being done, and they've been very pleased with the work that has been done so far. Uh, finishing up with Half Mile probably tomorrow, and then they'll check that this week, uh, and then they're gonna go back and look at the Duke Energy Site, uh, at the end of Half Mile to make sure it's clean, uh, they've still had some beaver issues there. So the project is moving forward, uh, again, I appreciate Ashley Smith and her staff, um, getting this done and making sure it's being done right. Um, the other thing that I did want to publicly thank is our county clerk, Carol Bowden, uh, Carol has given up her office, uh, to, to move, and, and the reason why she gave up her office was we really needed to bring Chip back over to the fourth floor, um, in his new role as Assistant County Manager, and, uh, the best place for him to do it was really in Carol's office, and Carol's now in that workspace that we had. I think she's happy with the space, but that was Carol's idea, and she really did that because it was the best for staff, it was the best for Wayne County and how we can operate, and I just wanted to, to publicly thank Carol for doing that. And, um, at this point, I have nothing else unless anybody has any questions.
Well, where's Carol at now? I missed her.
That, that little, uh, works area between her office and Christie's, so we've kind of renovated that.
Oh, so you'll pass through for everybody that comes in, right?
Now she closed the door.
Actually, no, I blocked one door, so you don't have to.
Oh, you had, okay, all right.
It looks real good, take a look at it when you get through there.
All right.
Is it big enough?
Yeah, it's big enough.
Again, we're welcome back, Commissioner Vale, so I'm gonna give you the first shot at it today, and I'm sure you've been saving it for some, sometime.
Okay, okay, uh, I don't have a report to give, but I would like to say I'm glad to be back, uh, I, uh, thank all of you for the support that I got while I was out, and, uh, the day after my operation, I called Carol, of course, now I kept up with everything, I was only, on my email, my iPad, and I, I liked the word Ed Quimartie to death, calling him every two and three times a day sometime, uh, he, he never told me no, I don't know why, but, but anyway, the day after my operation, I called Carol, I said, Carol, I said, this is John Vale calling from heaven. She paused a minute, she said, oh, oh, how you doing?
And yet she came back.
But anyway, I'm glad to be back, uh, miss you guys, but I would like to get a Joe Doherty report.
It's been, it's been a tough one.
Okay, but I'm glad to be back, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I didn't have a whole lot of, uh, meetings, we had a DSS board meeting, I just want to say that, uh, Department of Social Services has made major strides, uh, since Tammy Schrenker's been here as our new director, and before when Earl Merritt was here, uh, things are really looking up in DSS, we're having a, as a matter of fact, because of the commissioners, uh, readjusting the pay scale, uh, a while back at DSS, we are actually hiring people from other counties that have hired from us, we're hiring them back. So that's a good thing. So, uh, I'm, I'm really pleased as to where we are now versus two years ago. I did want to take just a second, Mr. Chairman, to reflect back on this past weekend, as already been mentioned in our invocation, uh, being Easter weekend and the crucifixion of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I want to refer, refer back to an editorial in this past Sunday's newspaper from Representative Jimmy Dixon. If you didn't read it, go back and read it. Representative Dixon hit the nail on the head, and we need to hear more of this, some people don't want to hear it, but we know, a lot of us know where our answers are. Representative Dixon was a hundred percent correct, we can throw all this money, we can dictate in our schools, we can do all of this, but unless we look at the big picture and start now, in reeducating and getting our family units back together in the United States of America, we are doomed to solve anybody's problems. If you look on Facebook, there's a Facebook pa, uh, post this morning on a school teacher that's getting ready to retire based on the fact, and got pictures, you see it, Commissioner?
I, I shared it.
Well, good, I'm glad you did, but when a, when a parent comes up to a teacher and says, you don't need to hold my child responsible for what he does in your classroom? How, where we, where we come to, folks? The bottom line is, is that we can, we can address these issues, but we really need to get back to the basics of living, which is the biblical principles that our families in the United States of America were founded on. Until we do that, and that's what I miss about Billy Graham, Billy Graham had more revivals in this country than anybody else that I can remember. We need some, we need to have a revival in this country to get our, our families back to being a family, to being a family. Representative Dixon is exactly one hundred percent correct, but look, a lot of politicians don't want to hear that, don't want to hear that, but it's an actual fact and it's an actual truth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ray Cott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna try to keep my comments brief today. Uh, I did attend the ribbon cutting at the Wayne Community College for the Nursing Assimilation Laboratory, and, uh, it's the state-of-the-art new facility, and, uh, very proud of it, uh, should be able to assist, uh, our hospital and surrounding hospitals with some very qualified nurses, uh, also- unless we look at the big picture, and starting now, in reeducating and getting our family units back together in the United States of America, we are doomed to solve anybody's problems. If you look on Facebook, there's a Facebook post this morning on a school teacher that's getting ready to retire based on the fact, and got pictures. You see it, Commissioner Vale?
I shared it.
Well, good, I'm glad you did. But when a parent comes up to a teacher and says, "You don't need to hold my child responsible for what he does in your classroom," where have we come to, folks? The bottom line is, is that we can address these issues, but we really need to get back to the basics of living, which is the biblical principles that our families in the United States of America were founded on. Until we do that, and that's what I miss about Billy Graham. Billy Graham had more revivals in this country than anybody else that I can remember. We need to have a revival in this country to get our families back to being a family, to be in a family. Representative Dixon is exactly 100% correct. But look, a lot of politicians don't want to hear that. Don't want to hear that, but it's an actual fact, and it's an actual truth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ray Cox.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna try to keep my comments brief today. I did attend the ribbon cutting at the Wayne Community College for the Nursing Assimilation Laboratory, and it's the state-of-the-art new facility, and I'm very proud of it. Should be able to assist our hospital and surrounding hospitals with some very qualified nurses. Also, keep in mind, Thursday of this week, the remains of, I think he was a Colonel, Colonel Davis?
Colonel Ed Davis.
His remains are being returned from Laos where he was shot down. An Air Force pilot, shot down, what, 50 some years ago? And his remains are being brought back to Goldsboro Thursday. And I want to commend all of the agencies that's gonna be involved to show the county's gratitude for what his sacrifice was to his family, all of the churches, and I know a lot of the fire departments are gonna be involved, but I just... This is a very special occasion for Wayne County, to have lost one of our own, and he's finally coming home. And that's all the comments I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Quomartie.
I would just like to make one comment, and I don't think I've ever done this before, but my... One of my next-door neighbors passed away this past week, and was funerated last week, last Friday. Miss Katie Van, and she had, she has two daughters who teach in the school system. And the reason that I would specifically mention her name, she watched our telecast, and she took a lot of pride in seeing me maybe the week following the telecast, or some few days. And she would always make a comment to me about the telecast, what was said, and how she felt about it, and so forth and so on. So she was watching us, and so I just wanted to say something out loud to show respect for her today. That's it.
You know, we were sitting here going through the floodplain ordinance, and there's a lot of detail there, and it is rather thick. But one of the things that I have found a number of residents are concerned about, and that is, if they have a property in which any portion of their lot is in the floodplain, I mean, just a corner of it, then the lenders are requiring flood insurance on that property in order to get a mortgage. And speaking for them, it would be nice that that requirement not be there. It'd be one thing if the residence, if the structure is in the floodplain. But if you've got a two-acre tract of land that's there on that site, and one corner of that property is actually in the floodplain, then you've got to get flood insurance on the entire thing. And that is a real hardship to a lot of people. So it'd be nice if we could look into that. Talking about the Mount Olive Gateway Route, this has been in the works for years trying to get this route. Other members on the board have worked on that. To get it finally coming to fruition is a major thing for our county. That was brought about as a result of a grant that is coming from the NC DOT, which is going to help fund that for one year. I suppose the reason I bring that up is that Mount Olive has an opportunity here, and that is to actually see that that route be successful. Because if it's successful, then it will continue. But if they do not support that route, they're gonna have to look at the financing of it, and after the grant runs out, which is a year, then it's gonna be a difficult thing to maintain that. We have gotten buy-in from the city council down in Mount Olive. They are contributing some to this. We've established a very low fare, a reasonable fare, and I'm just hoping that it'll be very successful down there. Once we can get that done, then we can move to the northern end of the county and hopefully get a route there as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gurley.
Mr. Vale, welcome back.
Thank you.
It's good to see you sitting in that chair again.
Right.
I read Representative Dixon's letter as well, and there's a lot of truth in that. And should have pointed out, these ladies and gentlemen here for the National Service Day, and they're looking after their kids and grandkids. That's what it's all about, and that's what's needed to help turn us around. And so I just wanted to publicly say thanks to them. Following up on what Commissioner Ray Cox said, it was actually Al Peterson, who is the liaison coordinator for the USO, he was the one that got this thing rolling with Colonel Davis. And Colonel Davis is from, I think, down there in the Brogdon Community originally, is where he's from. And his plane was shot down, let's see, it was in Laos, it's been about 50 years, you know, been about 50 years ago. But his remains will be brought back, they'll arrive at Mardi Ue about 12:30, and they'll be escorted by the Patriots Coalition, excuse me, Patriot Riders, all the way back to Goldsboro, coming down 540, 264, and 70 bypassed down the way toward Seymour Johnson, excuse me, Seymour Funeral Home. And he's already lined up, you know, parking for people to be out at the Community College and the Maxwell Center. So if you've got the time, you know, about somewhere between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock, the Colonel Davis's remains will come through Wayne County. I think it's important that we recognize the sacrifice that he and his family's made over all these years, and I'm so glad he's able to come home. And on Friday, he'll be buried at the Veterans Cemetery.
Also, Mr. Chairman, this will be helpful, some closure too, for a lot of Vietnam veterans that didn't get any appreciation of what they did.
So if you've got time, please try to attend. Anyhow, that's all I got to say. Is there any other business to come before this board today? Mr. Chairman. Who moves first?
The reason why we have people coming back now from the Laos area, see, we weren't supposed to be fighting in Laos. So now they can mention that, you know, the founding body in Laos. Well, back during the Vietnam War, I mean, that was a no-no, you didn't say anything about anybody flying over Laos.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
I just want to follow up real quickly on our floodplain ordinance. Not, I don't want the public to get the wrong impression about what we discussed, but Commissioner Vale, I believe that I have property at the beach, that part of my lot is in a floodplain, and I'm not required to have flood insurance. I was, is that changed in this new ordinance? Could we clarify that? The only reason I'm saying it, I don't want the public to get the wrong idea here.
Am I correct?
It would be a lender's rule, it's not a rule in your ordinance. It would say, if you got a lender that's going to require that, my recommendation is to see if you can find a different lender.
Find somebody else. So it is not part of the ordinance, it is actually a lender's rule?
Lender's rule. And a lot of subdivisions that have been approved over the years, when you're down on a stream that you know you can't develop, those lots went down there because the developer couldn't do anything else with them, so he sent them to the creek.
Exactly right. Okay, good information. Thank you.
All right, man, I know we need to return to closed session, because I know we didn't finish, and it's for the same reasons as before.
Same reason, yes, sir.
Motion go to closed session. Got a motion? Hold the favor, ladies and gentlemen.